Welcome to this first meeting of the Muppets City Council for month of September 2025. And official call already in order, and first item on the agenda is if there are any conditions or corrections, or if we approve the agenda. Staff, is there any changes?
Move approval.
Okay, Craig. Move and second to approve agenda as presented. And we're in order that all pay with motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next item in the communications section is just a reminder, if you're here to speak to a particular topic on the agenda, just hold your comments until that item comes up on the agenda, make sure that we identify you so you can address, make your comments known. But this is open communications time, and as it says in the agenda, speak up to five minutes, go up to the mic, and make sure it's green button on. And Scott, are you okay? Can you hear okay? All right, Scott's good. So if anybody here speaks for open comments, welcome you to the podium.
Do I push this down?
So the green light comes on.
That's red.
There you go.
Thanks so much. My name's Arlie Bowens. I live at 715th Avenue Southwest here in town. And I have an invitation for all of you. I'm representing tonight Voices United. It's a local group that is affiliated with the National Group Indivisible, which is a nonpartisan organization. And throughout the state of Iowa, in the last month or so, have been different meetings held to focus on rural issues and to invite candidates of both parties to speak to rural Iowans. And so the big, Sue's going to hand out an invitation to you. On Sunday, September 28th, at the Cedar County Fairgrounds, several different counties are going to gather together. And as you can see, which very, very small print, all of the candidates that have been invited, both Republican and Democrat. We don't know if there are any independents or other parties on there. I think they're mostly the two major parties. But we're inviting people that are running for federal or statewide office. And the focus again is to focus on rural Iowans and to make sure that these candidates are paying attention to those folks outside the big cities. So, any questions about the agenda? Then one other invitation. Our Voices United holds meetings every twice a month at White East in Lisbon, and we have different speakers on different important issues. And we invite you to join us anytime. We'll be meeting the first and third Wednesdays, right, Sue? Of each month, and from 5:00 to 7:00. And our next speaker is?
Marty St. Clair.
Dr. Marty St. Clair, about water quality. Thank you. We had some really, really great speakers and some good discussions, so we invite you to join us for those discussions as well.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Scott, you good?
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies. Anybody else here like to address the council, like public comment? Then we'll move forward to the consent agenda. We've got three items on, and if you want to pull off, any other comments, questions?
I would move approval of the consent agenda as a.
Thank you, Craig.
Second.
Thank you, Mark. Move and second to approve the items on consent agenda. If you're ready to vote on that, all pay with motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Moving on to motions for approval, claims list, the last one that's set out Friday.
I will make a motion to approve claims list.
Thank you, staff. Is there a second? I'll take call on that one. Move and second to approve a motion for use in claims list. And if you're ready to vote on that, all pay with that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. And day two is discussion consideration of a general contract for services between the Muppets and the Lisbon Police Department and the Tree Town Consultants LLC K-9 program. Council action as needed. And Chief Blanks told me ahead of time that he is on vacation, but you may have some input on this, Scott, comments?
Yeah, so it's been a little bit. We intentionally, obviously after the events surrounding Monster, waited to ensure that we were ready to move forward with another K-9 officer. And the officer who was assigned, the K-9 would be ready as well. So in the meantime, there were a number of donated funds that would be used or can be used to purchase the K-9 officer and the Dogs for Law Enforcement, the ELE, has donated a 200, a 200-hour certification class. We did have a rather lengthy discussion about utilizing some of those donated funds to ensure that there is a proper fenced-in yard at the K-9 officer's home. This is fairly normal, either a fenced-in yard or some sort of kennel situation. Steve utilizes his garage, and that's how he keeps the animal warm. So it's likely to be some sort of fencing that will go in utilizing those donated funds. So to answer people's questions, yes, we've taken into consideration what had transpired with Monster and how to rectify that situation, obviously to prevent that happening again. GROM?
GROM.
GROM. G-R-O-M is the new, will be potential new K-9.
Appreciate Chief Blanks's letter to us as well, which summarized this for us and makes it kind of sense. I'm sure the volunteer helped as well. That usually goes for raising money for K-9, so. Thank Officer Mole for stepping forward again, as well as his family, but this is a huge commitment from all members of his family. And I'm hopeful with enough time this transpired from one incident to this one, and I'm glad he's willing to step forward again here. And we've got some corrective action planned there. Is this, is the training in Shenandoah or someplace southwest Iowa?
No, so this GROM is not from the same kennel that Monster was.
Forest City.
Forest City's actually in kind of more northwest Iowa. Southwest Iowa was where Monster came from. And.
Tree Town Kennels.
The individual that we purchased Monster from originally does not specialize in, the training that's required for basically rights of an officer versus rights of, very apprehension. So he was former military, so it's less about the current status in law enforcement. Moving forward, Steve will go to a training that is specialized for law enforcement.
I'd like to say I'm pulling into court. When I first joined the council almost eight years ago, Doug Shannon asked me to go to lunch with him, and this was the conversation we had about the addition of a K-9. And here we are again. And I can see, not only the value of Monster to the department, but the community and the connection that Monster made with kids. And to me, anytime that kids can learn to trust the police officers and people around them, it's a good thing, or the dogs around them, doesn't matter. So I just think that the public, you did touch on the public emotions aspect, but very specifically, that was something that I was surprised by and pleased by. So I'd like to make a motion to approve this.
Second, you stepping in, Paul. Okay. Move and second to move forward the K-9 program contract with Forest City firm, and they continue the process with Officer Mole and so on. Any other comments, questions, staff? Otherwise, this is a voice vote. All pay with motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Thank you for the research, Chief Blanks, and Officer Mole stepping forward here with his family. Third item is discussion consideration of replacement of network equipment for the LBC. Council action as needed.
As everything computer-related anymore, obviously the LBC's equipment is five years old, needs to be replaced. We had, I shouldn't say we, LBC staff had a rather long conversation with Iowa Solutions about purchasing equipment outright and allowing them to maintain. That purchase would be somewhere in the neighborhood of $15,000 to $20,000. Or go to a more managed care service in which essentially the price is the same, but they manage it on their network for us. Similar to what we've done here at City Hall in the age of cybersecurity and that nature, it's just easier to go to managed care, and the cost is not significantly different than what it would be to buy this outright and then have them solve.
Yeah, the five years, if they kept the same price, which I doubt they would, would end up being $18,980 versus the $15,000 to $20,000 range to buy it. It does look about the same. I didn't see anything in there about whether or not they lock in that rental price per year.
They don't, and they won't. And that's because, especially in the age of do we have tariffs, do we not have tariffs, cost of the equipment itself, should it fail, could be significantly different, so.
That would be the only thing that would cross my mind in saying, well, by buying it outright, you're locking in the price.
Yes, you are.
It's not.
No, I think that the difference being, you know, obviously we've covered the possibility of catastrophic failures. Anything that's network-related or warranty-related, they would handle on their side versus us. So I think that's probably the best fact that I can put forward.
You know, Solutions is a vendor that we already deal with in this building, but we have.
Yeah, so they are a vendor citywide.
Okay. Well, knowing that Matt and his team have discussed this thoroughly, also with city staff, other city staff, and they recommend to go ahead with a one-year lease, I would endorse that. I would, I guess a motion to approve this. Second, to you, Craig and Mark. Move and second to move forward the Solutions opposed contract for the LBC network equipment. And if there are no other comments or questions from staff or anybody, if you're ready to vote on that, all pay with the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. And four is discussion consideration of the application number five with Municipal Pipe Tool Company LLC on 2024 Sanitary Sewer Rehab Project. Council action as needed.
This is the application in the amount of $46,000, $17.92. This is part of that million-dollar ARPA, Lynn County ARPA grants that we received for sewer rehab.
Questions about that?
There's no questions. All move to approve the application number five, Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project, in the amount of $46,000, $17.92.
Thank you, Mark. Is there a second?
Second.
What are the questions? The last invoice? Well, number four, which follows.
No, will this be the last? No. There's always going to be at least two more beyond when you feel like you've gotten to at least 80%. So knowing that they're not quite there yet, I would say there's probably a visa chance that we'll see at least there one more.
Great. It's great pointed out, this is number five. We really need to vote on that motion at this time. So voice vote, all pay with motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Now we've got another change order, number four, 2024 Sanitary Sewer Project. Same message here?
This is actually two change orders in one. It's just got a net increase of $2,170. They were able to open cut one of the point repairs as opposed to doing hydroexcavating, so they saved some dollars there. But then I had to basically put the salvage back in another point repair that ended up being more complicated than originally expected.
I would move to approve change order number four for the Sanitary Sewer Rehabilitation Project in the amount of $2170.
Second, and Mark. Okay. Move and second to move forward, change order number four, 2024 Sanitary Sewer Rehab Project. And if you're ready to vote on that one, all pay with the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, that motion carries. J six is discussion consideration of J E O invoice 163774, the Uptown Streetscape Design Project.
Pay application in the amount of $21,052. This essentially gets us, well, not quite business, but if you read their report, they are for the most part done. They're not 100% planned, but with a four-year gap, going anything beyond 60, just essentially throwing money down the drain at this point, because enough can change, and likely will change enough where your gap, that they'll have to go back and revamp even the 60% that they have. And as you can see, there will be a reduction in their fees that will be seen at the end of this project when you close it up.
And this is, is Jeremy done now?
Yeah, he is.
So how do you plan to make this work, Chris? Will you actually close this project for now because of the time gap?
We will.
And just start it all?
So the reality is, and the question was asked before the meeting, a lot can happen in four years. J E O can be there. They're a long-term company, so I don't expect them to go anywhere, but they can get bought out. A lot, like I said, a lot can happen. So we get to a point where we feel probably comfortable that even if we had to hire another firm four years from now, they can basically pick up this document and finish the design work with pretty little fanfare. So we're happy with what we've received so far. The intent is obviously to work with J E O. Moving forward, Jeremy wasn't the only engineer that was involved in this project, so there's not going to be any fall off as long as nothing happens between them.
One reason for the four-year delay is the fact that Highway 1 North and South is ahead of the queue, at the top of queue for the next couple summers, so we don't want to have multiple huge street projects turning down the traffic in town. Those come first.
They're both foreign market roads. I don't think we can have both of them closed.
Yeah. I know. So I was going to say, this allows the city to evaluate that and to see if it can make any adjustments to the design plans. We don't know what we don't know.
Right. And there'll be a whole other conversation and a whole new set of businesses, or some new businesses uptown that will want to put one of these other projects back over again. But we have a much better base than what we previously did.
All right. With that being said, I will move to approve the J E O invoice number 163774 for the Uptown Streetscape Design Project.
Thank you, second. Second, Mark. Scott, I haven't ignored you, but I haven't looked up and checked, checking in with you there, but yell loud or if you want to leave with questions or anything like that. Motion on the floor to go forward with the J E O invoice 163774 on the Uptown Streetscape Project. If you're ready to vote on that motion, all pay with motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. J seven, discussion consideration of professional services agreement with WHKS for GIS mapping of the Muppets City Cemetery. Council action as needed.
This is a great price, by the way.
It's a fabulous deal, I thought.
Well, I'm going to preface this by saying, because Michelle's in the audience.
I don't know anything about this.
WHKS will come in and do the mapping. The cemetery commission, along with staff, is going to have to do some inputting.
Populate the data.
Yeah. Which Meredith said she's more than excited about in order to get this whole process done. I think initially, when I talked to the cemetery commission, I had this estimated to be like $100,000.
And they're going to do drone word flyover stuff?
Yeah.
Are we going to walk in? They're going to, yeah.
So.
They're going to turn up all those scrolls.
I thought they were missing a zero when they submitted, but.
Yeah, but so much of that cost savings is because the cemetery commission is willing to populate that data.
That's great.
That's a huge cost savings, so thank you to our cemetery commission. Michelle's like, I don't know anything about that.
We need to make sure they have plenty of coffee and.
Good morning, Lori. Yeah, okay. Just act like you know what's going on. It's fine.
Well, when Catherine and I purchased our plots and Meredith unrolled these scrolls, which you've seen, we were kind of like, are you sure this is accurate? And we're going to purchase these, and is there room there for all this?
You do have those maps digitally too, just so you know. You're not just on paper.
Yeah, they're written by files.
That's what I said.
I would say, though, that once it's populated with initial information, there is a whole new areas that we can move into as far as GIS mapping, things that we could potentially do. So, I mean, the initial investment isn't significant, but expecting some more in the future as well.
Well, I would move approval of hiring WHKS for $12,500 to assist us in the mapping of our cemetery. Is there a second?
Second. And I just want to be clear, so will there be like annual, the annual fees since we're populating a lot of?
We don't sell enough, to be honest with you. Lori's quite adept at GIS inputting. The challenge obvious for one individual is to input all the information, gather the information. That's why you hire a firm to start that. But we probably average, Meredith is probably yelling at me from the UK, because I'm going to say about a dozen cemetery lot sales per year, so it's not.
Yeah.
Once it's established, it's not, you know, quarterly challenging to keep up with it.
Things that we can do.
Yeah.
Okay, great. I was just curious.
Will you pay a yearly subscription for?
Oh, for Arc Pro, yeah?
Yeah.
Arc GIS.
Chris has alluded to it, but I'd my thanks and commendations to the cemetery commission. First of all, I've never seen a commission that filled up so fast with membership, and then how engaged you are in the short time that the commission's been around. So thank you, on behalf of that group. I think we have a motion on the floor to move forward with the WHKS contract for GIS mapping of our cemetery. And if you're ready to vote on that, all pay with the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is discussion consideration of GMP invoice for the HPC Design Guidelines Project. Council action as needed.
Invoices in the amount of $9,795.80. They don't have, I mean, if you look at their invoice, they're at 100% in about four of the categories. Obviously, the main category, the first reside revised draft guidelines has a zero by it, so assuming that, I have not heard from Suzette that this is not going well, so.
We get another citizen-based committee that is a longstanding citizen-based committee that does all this work on a project that takes a lot of specialized expertise, and we've been very fortunate as a community to have people over the years that had a lot of experience, qualifications, and statewide recognition in this area. So we're lucky to have a historic preservation group like this. Questions of staff? Are we ready to take them, or motion on others?
I would move approval of JMT invoice number 3-267410 in the amount of $9,795.80.
Thank you, Paul. Is there a second?
Second.
Move and second to move forward the GMP invoice on the historic preservation commission Design Guidelines Project. And if you're ready to vote on that, all pay with the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. J nine is discussion consideration of custom street sign base estimate for the Uptown Streetscape Project. Western Merrill.
So there's two options that are right up in front of you. Option one is in the range of $6,800, and option two is just under $16,000. I can't believe I say this out loud, because I'm usually the one not wanting to spend any money, but option two is a more robust model, and knowing that we're going to likely do something with the streetscape at some point in the future, my preference is to go with the more expensive option here, because they will be reused likely as part of the streetscape moving forward. For those that are wondering what this is, this, these areas will contain all of the signs that used to be on the old streetlights that just basically tore them to bits. So part of the approval of this streetlight project is that we wouldn't go ahead and start cluttering them up, especially since the line is the one that is taking care of maintenance for the next two, 10 years. So these will go back in place of the old.
The old street.
And then mulls were, all of the no parking, snow route signs that used to be on the streetlights will go on these mulls.
Okay. When I looked at the two, but option two just jumped out as the better option to me as well, simply based upon more robust, as you said. Well, I also think the design fits in nicely with what's already up there.
Option two is actually the exact base that has the streetlights, it's a replica but smaller. The base as in most recent base size. Okay. Yes, we've got that covered. I'm in support too. I would like to make a motion to approve Dale Nail's bid on the custom street sign base estimate on option number two for the streetscape.
Also, the motion to move forward with it, it was option number two. Thanks for the second, correct. Move and second to move forward on this custom street sign base estimate for Uptown Streetscape Project. And if there's no other comments or questions, if you're ready to vote on that, all pay with the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries. Moving to discussion items. Most important decision needs to be made in the annual business cycle in the Muppets Committee, City Hall here. Halloween night designation. It is on Friday of Halloween. Halloween night designation. It is on Friday of Halloween. It is last Friday of October. And that is the first Friday of playoffs. And do you have some input from the school department quickly?
So, you know, given the Montburnin's position currently in the standings and the possibility that they very well could be the number one seed to come out of their district, not jinx anything. The issue or concern that we have is Stonebrook happens to be one of the busiest areas that we have for trick-or-treating. And it would also potentially be conflicts with park unit or the state playoffs. Now, I did reach out to Matt Tei and the school district just to get their opinion on this. I did say that typically that first playoff game is not super well attended by the opposing team. So there's, you know, there is a chance that it may not be an issue. Then the issue is how many kids do we lose either at the game or from trick-or-treating if, on the fact that there's a potential playoff.
Game starts at seven, trick-or-treating ends at eight. Starts at five, ends at eight.
Yes.
It's more the traffic that you're worried about.
For, for staff's purposes, absolutely. The traffic conflict definitely makes me nervous. We have a football game and we do have emergency vehicles that do exit into Stonebrook.
There are a lot of children.
Yeah.
Well, if you've ever been through Stonebrook or when you're trick-or-treating, the amount of cars that are going down with their children along with parked cars for a football game, I mean, it's gonna be a lot.
Yeah.
So do you have a proposal for when?
Well, so I, I kind of suggested to the mayor that maybe we just let the press put this out there and Facebook do its thing.
Pressure.
Well.
The good news is, we're talking about this earlier.
Yeah, so I think we still have two more meetings in which you could change the designated date. From my perspective, the suggestion would obviously be Thursday. I think the last time that we attempted to make a change, it didn't go well. We changed it to a day that seemed logical to everybody in the room and did not end up being logical to parents. So I'm going to make the suggestion that it would get moved to the Thursday before, not settle on that.
Last time, there wasn't as much time as what we have right now.
Yes.
And I do feel that if ultimately we make the decision to change it, what's gonna be very important is the communication.
Yes.
And I think that was another factor because of the shorter timeframe last time.
Well, so do you think we should make a decision tonight regarding?
I don't think we should make a decision tonight. I think it's worse.
We stick with the fact that it's a discussion item with no action.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Get it out there that we're thinking about this, renewing on this right now, and that we realize that we've done this before without enough leeway. And it caught parents off guard. And so we would like to do our new diligence here and decide whether we do it on Thursday or on Haul Saints Day, November first.
Good.
I would just interject on November first, you'd be operating against the C D G event uptown, should we cook off. So.
Yep.
I'm just keeping that in mind.
Yeah.
Busy week, huh?
Maybe they come. But yeah, we'll find out. Do we can then reflect that Mr. Malaschich recommended?
I would, I, I would recommend Thursday during the week. But there's that, I mean, we can, it's not to say that we cannot not leave it on Friday, but understand that there will be more potential for conflict that evening or at all. It would be.
Capsule it.
And we are open to suggestions.
All right. Consider it discussed.
No discussion on that one?
Yeah.
The next one is a comprehensive plan update. This references the most recent one, which is the 2016, D 2016 Comprehensive Plan, which as staff has mentioned, the plan is either, a lot of the components of it is either complete or obsolete. It's a discussion item. Do we want to, what do we want next steps to be in this process?
It, so there's a couple of things. Number one, I think the, the plan that was completed was well-written. It was done by Easy Dog. It was done for, I wanna say about $15,000, which is extremely reasonable for a compliance update. Understand that these plans can be as simple or as complicated as the community wants them to be. One of the challenges that I think the current version of the plan has, at the time, because it saved significant amounts of money, had a lot of local input into the plan. The problem is, is when you live in a community for very long, your vision starts to become more and more tunnel. It's harder for you to think outside of the box. So one of the issues with the current plan is that a number of the items that were listed were already in the queue. So it wasn't much of a challenge from staff's perspective to start knocking off goals and objectives out of this plan, which obviously made it become a little obsolete sooner than it may normally have in the past. Now, if you wanted to know what the likelihood or where we would likely be if we did not go that route and hired a firm. We are in fact in that $75,000, $10,000 range. Depending on the amount of fees if you want to double. Understand that this document is important to us. It sets the baseline for, for you to establish goals and objectives on a year, biannual basis for us. It does serve a legal purpose. So it is important that it stays up to date for that reason as well. If the city is challenged on decisions, they will look at that comprehensive plan on just about every land use decision that gets made. Talks about population increases, just other demographics that are of importance to the community as well. The good news is, is the bypass plan can be incorporated into a update.
So in the short-term plan that we did two years ago?
Correct.
Because we used the comprehensive plan a lot. Looking at that, does we piece that together?
Correct. So this is not, you know, this is more kind of a, a heads up that your plan, the plan that the city is operating on, is becoming more and more obsolete every year. And that on your radar may not be this year, this fiscal year, but we do need to probably start making plans to send out an R P, R Q in the next fiscal year's timeframe. And start the processing. It typically takes at least a year for one of these plans to get completed.
Numerous times I've referred to that plan in the decision-making. And it, it just lends itself to the guidance and the visioning that we need sometimes to keep ourselves in the right direction. So I see a lot of that in that.
Valuable jewel. Anything else that's further, further discussion?
No, I just wanted to kind of put that information out in front of you and then if you had any questions for us.
The only question, as I agree, I mean, visiting is a big part of what this group is charged to do. And that plan helps us in that process. Does it need to be 10 years? And is there, is there a cost differential if and when you do go out to an R P? If you do a five-year, or seven and a half year, or seven-year?
So typically, they're actually supposed to be 15- to 20-year plans. Most of your action items will be in that seven to 12 range. So much changes after 12 years that it's really difficult. Most of what you see after that are really kind of, I don't know, call it high in the sky, but they're definitely out there.
Boy, if you look at the assumptions in that plan, especially the data assumptions, they were wildly incorrect.
Yes. Kind of politically correct here.
I know.
You, you definitely get what you purchased. And so I think in order to get outside perspective, similar to, like I said, the bypass plan. We did a lot of public input sessions for that plan, but Confluence came back and based upon what our input was and best practices, merged the two. You know, it's like any negotiation. Both sides aren't 100% happy, but they're not 100% upset either. So I think that's really what you need to aim for as a council when you're looking at a vacuum that's as important as this, is you're going to, to spend some money to make that happen.
And in my, my experience with doing this multiple times, I, I think that the guidance of considering outside input is extremely important. Because I think in some of our past comprehensive plans, it was driven more by passion for what is without consideration of potential of what is coming. And it's that sort of outside-the-box thinking that you get from outside input that sometimes we don't see as long-time, I can say this now, long-time residents. That you, you get tunnel vision into a certain mindset. And, you know, I'm, I'm going to say this very light-heartedly for Chris. If years ago, people did historic preservation and comprehensive planning, we would still have dirt streets and boardwalk sidewalks and a watering trough at the top of the hill were first street and highway one me. Because at that time, they couldn't envision what we know today. And I know that's an extreme, but it's that type of thinking that sometimes we get caught up in and we don't see what the true potential is and the true benefit is of some of these other things. So I, I, I am very glad you brought this forward. And I, I do think that keeping some of the things that are already in process out of the comprehensive plan in terms of we're going to get this done. Because if they're already in process, they shouldn't be taking space in our comprehensive plan for the future. And I think that's a, a huge part of, of what sort of created the 10-year versus the 15, 20-year. So I, I, that's just my input from my experience.
And understand that even if we were to start, or wanted to start this next fiscal year, the lead-up to you getting a plan or a company on board, theoretically, we could start working on an R P, R Q in January, February, gearing up for a July one start with the consultant. So it does take, to do this correctly, it does take a certain amount of time to create the R P and have the council approve that and send that out, get responses, go through the entry process. So there's a method to the madness. There's not necessarily an output financially outside of staff time, but there's a significant amount of staff time that goes into the lead-up.
And even once you do sign and they start that process, it can be done in a year, it can go a year and a half, it can go two years. There's a lot of variables there. So I, I like proactive vision here. Thank you.
You got enough direction on that? We'll have a discussion.
Reports, mayor's report, I mentioned three things. First of all, the housing conference, housing opening of the Capital Trail Apartments with C H I, our partner there, that went very well two Fridays ago. And I think I'm attending part of the housing conference in Cedar Rapids tomorrow, where C H I is doing a presentation. So that was a good, good bourbon cutting. Second thing is, I am gonna join staff, some staff with the League of Cities Convention in Des Moines in a couple of weeks. And Main Street is next Thursday, accreditation process. Some of you have been asked already about being part of that. So hopefully you've got that in your calendars. But that's a big deal for Jesse and who want to support the, the process there with C D G. And three things I was gonna mention. Consul, committee reports. Working on the city administrator's reports. Chris mentioned some things.
You mentioned a couple of them. Other than, the only thing that I have in addition would be the reconstruction meeting tomorrow for Quick Star. Well, not for Quick Star, for the road to Quick Star.
It's a good start.
I was gonna say, that'll be, that'll be across now, by the time I get out of here, if I saw the Quick Star starting that fast. It is Rachel Street, reconstruction.
We have to, yes, put the road in.
Any comments from city administrator, council members? Anyone else needs to come before this consul? Well, thank you all very much, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much.